You know, first I'd like to apologize to those people. Yesterday I sent out an email saying we were going to discuss reassessment at 10:45 and we're a little late, it's only 12:15. But I do apologize for people who have been watching us on TV and saw nothing. But I just wanted to mention that the purpose of today's discussion is to get an update on reassessment and for the town to decide whether or not we want to pursue the homestead. And Edie, would you have any?
Thank you. We'll make this as quickly as we possibly can. I just wanted to bring you up to speed as to where we are in the project. First, I'd like to introduce John Wollem. He's our state representative. Tom Donato is our revaluation monitor. And Gary Link is our new town deputy assessor. And me. So we're at a point now where we've inspected all of the properties and we've put values on every single parcel within the town of Greenburg. And we have done analysis after analysis after analysis, which John will talk about in a moment to let you know about where changes have occurred throughout our town. After John gets through with that, Tom will get up and speak a little bit about the actual shifts between the property types. And then at the conclusion of this, again, we'll make this as quick as possible, at the conclusion of this, I'd like to just put on the table for you and our taxpayers as to the next steps in the process. And that's what we'll conclude with. John?
Okay. Thank you for having me here today. Up on the screen, and for the folks at home, you'll see three pie charts.
Same thing.
And yeah, same thing that the board has in front of them in paper. This essentially represents the results of the tax shift analysis for the town's 2016 reassessment project. Just a very brief background as to how this was done. This essentially is a redistribution of the taxes that property owners in Greenburg paid in 2015. So it would be the town and county tax bill from April 2015, along with special districts. It would be the school tax bills that were paid among the 10 school districts within the town in September 2015. And for the two non-assessing unit villages, Ardsley and Irvington, the village taxes that were paid in June. This does not include the other four villages because they maintain their own assessment role. So essentially, the prior assessments that generated those taxes, along with the actual tax rates, were used to generate what people paid. And to that, the 2016 preliminary assessments, and again, there are preliminary assessments for all properties in the town of Greenburg presently in place, they were used to redistribute those tax levies, the purposes I just mentioned, using the new values. So of course, that resulted in new tax rates being calculated. And the point is to compare what people actually paid based on their prior value to what they would have paid in this simulation had everyone's new preliminary value been in place. So there are three pie charts here. The first one, the top one, says without homestead prior shares. So this simply represents the distribution of taxes from 2015, the way they were actually extended. And I need to point out that this pie chart shows the shares at an aggregate level. This is looking at the town's major property types: residential, commercial, your condominiums, your vacant land, and then your utility and special franchise. So very briefly, the orange, which is far and away the bigger share, it may show up a little bit darker on the screen, but the biggest wedge of that pie is residential. That's the residential taxable value. It represented 61.7% of the tax pie. The light blue is commercial, that was 22.1%. The condominiums and co-ops represented 9.6%. Vacant land was 1%. And the utility and special franchises were about 5.6%. Again, that's the distribution historically for your 2015 taxes. And again, this is at the aggregate level. We're not talking about individual effects to individual parcels. So there are two scenarios here: with and without homestead, because of course, as part of this, the board is doing its due diligence and looking at whether there is a need for the homestead tax option. So I would like to first focus on the bottom right on the screen, without homestead current shares. This represents the distribution of 2015 property tax, again, based on the new 2016 preliminary value, showing the results for the major property types we just referred to. So again, the biggest wedge, it's showing up as kind of a, you know, a dark reddish-brown up there, that's residential. So without the homestead option, the residential share goes up slightly to 63.9% of the town's tax base. The commercial share goes down slightly, it's now 20.3% of the town tax base. The condominium co-op share goes down slightly to 8.5%. The vacant land share, and vacant lands certainly represent by far the smallest group of property based on value in the town, but at the aggregate, the vacant land class does go up to 2.7%. And the utility special franchise goes down a bit to 4.6%. Again, this is all at the aggregate property level. The third, which is immediately below the pie chart without homestead, says with homestead current shares. And that's meant to represent how this distribution would look if homestead were adopted, if it were in place, using the 2016 preliminary assessments. Again, the largest share still remains as residential, but the residential share actually goes down very, very slightly. It goes to 61.4%. The commercial share, which is the lighter blue, that also goes down 19.3%. The condominium co-op share goes up to 12.5%. The vacant land share also goes up, not quite as much without homestead, but it still goes up to about 2.6%. And the utility special franchise goes down to 4.2%. So this is showing, again, at the aggregate, what's happening as a result of each scenario, with and without homestead. What I would say is that typically, a decision about homestead is usually based on the amount of shifting that occurs between major property types, most notably from commercial to residential. So with that, Tom, do you want to?
Sure.
For some observations?
As John has indicated, this is based on an aggregate, okay, not on a per-classal basis. Based on looking at the role in previous years and currently, okay, as if homestead and if homestead was not adopted, okay, the least impact on a per-class basis on an aggregate, okay, would be if the town did not adopt homestead, if they would have just continued, okay, with a regular standing role, all right, without homestead. And it's apparent when you start comparing the pieces or the classes within these pie charts, okay, one-on-one, okay?
And if the shifts have been much more significant, you might have, it might have been, the homestead might have been more appropriate at that point.
Correct. But since it's so minor, okay, within, again, on an aggregate basis, okay, within the classes, okay, the least intrusive or the least, has the least impact would be not to go homestead.
I think Edie had mentioned to us a few weeks ago that in the state, only about, my recollection was about 18 communities.
No, there's about, I think it's about 48 town, cities, and villages that have adopted homestead statewide.
Out of a thousand.
Of a thousand.
Yeah.
And what were their shifts like? Were they similar to this?
Offhand, I couldn't honestly tell you because it's been a while since anybody has adopted it. It's, what I think is fair to say that in general, in each of those cases, there was a big enough shift to the residential class that those assessing units saw need to do it. Because again, at its core, homestead is about insulating, homestead creates two classes of property, essentially residential and non-residential. And the effect of homestead is to insulate the residential or homestead class from shifting that would otherwise occur from a reassessment. And it results in two different tax rates: homestead and non-homestead, and typically the non-homestead rate is a higher tax rate. So without being able to give you precise numbers, it's fair to say that in each of those cases, there was enough of a shift that it caused them to say, "This is really untenable. We don't think we can do this reassessment and have that magnitude of shift result to the residences."
But also, we had talked, you know, a couple, you know, weeks ago, that if we just, let's forget, the shifting is one reason to, say, reject the homestead. Another possible, you know, reason could be if we do the homestead and there's more commercial development, you know, in the town, then the homeowners would not benefit from, you know, from the additional revenues because the new development would be part of a different class.
Well, they would.
It's actually true.
It's okay. They, I'll do this one. They would benefit, but not to the extent without the homestead. So because the proportionate shares will change.
Right, if there's a major development going on, say, in parts of the town, and there's a couple, there's some major developments that are being, you know, proposed, would the homeowners get more benefits if we do homestead or we don't do homestead?
Look, I think that, just, and I'll just say this, and again, I don't think we want to get off on technical detail here, but essentially, if there is new construction, which is I think what you're talking about, new physical additions to the non-residential sector, yes, they go into the non-homestead class. But the bottom line is if one class gets bigger, it's going to take up more of a share, and that reduces the share on the other side. So I don't honestly think that in the case of new construction, there is an advantage or disadvantage to either scenario.
One of the other aspects, Tom, I don't know if you want to touch on this or not, we showed the significant, or the least significant impacts on the shifts, as they are right now, to the residential class, but maybe you want to just elaborate a little bit on the condominium?
Oh, between the two classes?
Yeah.
Whether it went homestead or not. If you were to look strictly at the condominium class, before the revow, they carried 9.6% of the tax burden, okay? After the revow, if you were to go with homestead, they would end up carrying 12.5%. Without adopting homestead, they would carry 8.5%. So the impact, okay, from going pre-revow to after revow, not adopting homestead, is much less of an impact if you don't adopt a homestead for the condominium class.
It's a 30% increase.
Yes. Right. So when you look at, comparing it to the other classes, it's much more burdensome to the condominiums to adopt homestead than any other class.
In addition to what Tom just said, I just want you to be aware that with the adoption of homestead, you're creating two classes of properties. And with that, as John said, the residential and the non-residential cooperative complexes would be in the non-residential. We have approximately 5,000 condos in the town, and 4,200 would fall into the homestead class, and 800 approximately would fall into the non-homestead. Not only having said that inequity in the legislation, you're also dealing with two tax rates: one for residential and one for non-residential, as John indicated, non-residential being typically a little bit higher, which means that the co-ops that are in the non-homestead and the condos that are in the non-homestead would pay a higher tax rate than what, if you don't adopt it. So because of the, I mean, there's other things that we wanted to talk about, but if you look at the shifts that we're talking about, the, I can't say insignificant shifts, but the less significant, and to be perfectly honest with you, we have been eating, breathing, and sleeping this revow for the last two years since we signed the contracts. And I have to just take a minute and say thank you very much. You guys have been absolutely amazing. John and I were here on Sunday for the last two Sundays. I mean, that just says a whole bunch. But anyway, the shifts that we found in running all of these analyses are surprisingly less than what any one of us expected. So that says a lot at the role, and the main reason why we did the reassessment was because of the surcheraries. $10 million a year we're paying back in refunds between the town, county, school, and villages. That has been consistent over the last many years. I have put together another, working on putting together another chart, which shows you the decrease in the assessables over the years because of all the surcheraries that we're dealing with. And the fact that, at the end of the day, we're still tweaking our numbers a little bit, but at the end of the day, we picked up approximately $1.3 billion worth of new value that we did not have before the reassessment. That's tremendous increase in our overall picture. So that's where we are at this point. John?
When you said we picked up 1.3...
Additional inventory.
Inventory. Does that mean that we're collecting more money?
So that's a really good point. I had it on my notes, I neglected that. In order to establish what these tax shifts were going to be and the whole process of a reassessment, this is what is known...
I think you want to answer no.
This is what is known as a zero-sum game.
Okay.
It's absolutely, you are not, I'm sorry, Paul, you are not collecting $1 more after the reassessment than you were before. It's based on exactly what you collected, it's just allocated correctly.
So the taxpayers benefit without an additional 1.3, though? Do they?
Yes. Basically, okay, look at the townwide tax because everyone pays that. What it means is that not having done the reassessment, the taxpayers that had their value reflected on the roll were actually paying for those properties that evidently were not fairly assessed, or that were actually, that did not have certain physical inventory reflected on the roll. So yes, it's fair overall. It means that everybody is paying their fair share, and the folks who had been paying, hopefully, will pay a little less because it's distributed among a larger share of taxable value.
And based on your experiences with the state, do you think we'll start seeing a decline in the surcheraries after the reassessment is completed?
Yes. It may not be immediate because you certainly have a, I'm sure you have a backlog of cases that are pending. And typically, a reassessment, understandably, causes property owners to look at their property value much more keenly than they otherwise might not, than they otherwise might in years where there is no reassessment. So in this year, for 2016, you may see a spike, but what we've seen in nearly all cases is that commercial filings go down over the course of the coming years, usually after a couple of years, the backlog subsides, and you're in a position of being much more easily able to defend your values and defend them successfully. And residential values typically tend to drop significantly, I'm forgetting, not values, residential filings tend to drop significantly in the year following the reassessment. In many communities, including places in Westchester that have done it recently, Mamaroneck, Scarsdale, Rye, the residential filings decreased by about half the year after the initial reassessment, and in most cases have continued to go down.
Yeah, I know Francis has another appointment, so in terms of the, you know, homestead provisions, you know, what's the, you know, feeling of the board as to whether we should ask the assessor to pursue homestead or not pursue homestead?
Well, let me just see if I can make this clear for myself and perhaps members of the public as well. After the revaluation with the homestead adopted, two things would occur. We'd effectively be creating two different tax rates, which would treat similarly situated homeowners differently, co-op and some condo versus other condo, right? So they would be treated differently. And then the second thing would be, with the homestead option, it would seem that there's a disproportionate impact, otherwise known as a tax hike, on citizens whose incomes are typically less than others, because I'm generalizing here, condo owners typically make less money than residential homeowners. Is that fair to say?
Co-op owners.
No.
No?
I don't think you can draw that conclusion.
No?
It could be seen, your citizens who live in condos...
But there's, I mean, okay, so the second point is not necessarily true. But it is true that the condo owners would be facing a tax hike that the residential homeowners would be facing.
30%.
30% rate on 30%.
Right.
In the aggregate.
30% tax hike.
In the aggregate.
Aggregate, absolutely.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it seems to me that if you're looking at the cost benefits, since the shift is so small, that it doesn't make, that it doesn't make sense to do the homestead, based on what we've heard.
I think it's fair to say that there's a dramatic shift. If we do homestead, there's a dramatic shift in the tax increase for condos.
Right.
Whereas if we do, don't do a homestead, there is a increase in the residential portion, but nowhere near what the increase would be if we were to do homestead for the condos. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Right. And if you don't do homestead, that dramatic shift of the condos is divided up among the other classes, maybe a small number for some, I'll put away my sheet already, maybe a small number for some, but for example, with homestead, it would be 4.2 for the utilities versus 4.6. So there's a pickup of .4. Another one picks up .1. The residential picks up 2.2. And so it reduces the burden of an increase over any class versus if we were to do homestead. And I guess the bottom line then is, do you do a dramatic shift for one class of properties, or do you spread out the increase over a broader class? And for me, I support not doing the homestead.
It seems to be a fairer distribution by not doing homestead.
Especially with all the data that's per-procentage, it doesn't justify doing the homestead.
So it seems we're unanimous.
Okay. That's fine. Could you, Edie, also explain, you know, there's six villages in the town, two have are part of, everybody in the town is being reassessed, all six villages in unincorporated Greenburg, but some of the villages have their own tax rolls. And could you explain how, you know, how each of the village residents would be impacted once the reassessment comes on?
The reassessment that we have been working on over the last couple of years is strictly for town, county, school, and fire taxes, including the village of Ardsley and the village of Irvington taxes, because they've since adopted the town's role. So whatever happens at the town level will happen as well in Ardsley and Irvington. The other four villages, they all have maintained their independent assessment status, which means they have their own assessor. They put their own values, and they set assessments for the levy of their own taxes, where we set assessments for the levy of village and village of Irvington and Ardsley taxes. So again, just to reaffirm, this revaluation is for town, county, school, fire taxes, the village of Irvington, and the village of Ardsley taxes. That's it. Everybody else is independent.
Right, but the people who live in the other villages, they still are being impacted by the reassessment, with the exception of the village portion of the taxes.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. And could you also explain to us, and the public, the process, what people could expect in March and, you know, going forward, and if people get something in the mail and they don't like the results?
Yep.
You know, who do they complain to?
Not pleasant? I just want to reaffirm the affected taxes that I just mentioned. The new values are 2016 assessments. They'll be brand-new, describe them in a minute. That is going to impact our first set of taxes in April of 2017. That's the first town and county set of taxes, town, county, and fire taxes. So let's talk about, we're here today, and the project's gone overall very well, so what happens tomorrow? If you look at your tax bills as they stand right now, you will see a percentage of market value of your assessment. So your assessment may be $10,000, or $20,000, or $30,000. That doesn't make a lot of sense to taxpayers. So what we're doing now going forward is that if you, your assessment will reflect the market value of your house. We are going to be assessing properties at 100% of market value. So when a taxpayer looks online, or gets a tax bill, or gets these letters coming out, they'll see if their property's worth $500,000, their assessment should be $500,000. That's how we're going to be going forward. I just want to talk a little bit, in the next month, there's going to be a lot of things changing. A taxpayer will be able to go online and look at their property record cards, and they will be in digital format so they can read them, whereas now they cannot. Their new assessments will be online at 100% of market value, so it's much easier to be understood. What will happen in the...
And you could compare with neighbors' properties also?
I can't say that, but maybe. Though everybody's, everybody's assessments will be online, it's public information. What will happen in mid-March, from now until mid-March, we will be working on making sure that the numbers are as accurate as we can possibly make them. In mid-March, every taxpayer in the town will be receiving a letter. It's called a disclosure notice. You will come, it will have two pieces of paper, it will be in the Town of Greenburg envelope, please taxpayers, don't throw them out. It will be in a Town of Greenburg envelope. On the top of it, it will say, "The Town of Greenburg, Tyler Technologies," that's our revaluation company, and it will give you, the first sheet will give you an explanation as to what has transpired. The second sheet of paper, probably most important, it will show you on the letter, this is what your assessment was before the reassessment, and this is what your taxes were before the reassessment, and this is what your new assessment will be, and your new taxes. That's what people are going to want to see. That letter's coming out again mid-March. Unfortunately, some people may not get them, they may throw them out, not knowing what it is. All of that information will be online and available. So that letter, from that point, upon receipt of that letter, taxpayers have a right, their own obligations, to review that. If the assessed value is the correct market value of the property, there's nothing further for a taxpayer to do. If they feel their assessment is incorrect, too high or too low, they should contact Tyler Technologies and go through the informal process. They can either call them on the phone, they can schedule an in-person meeting, they can schedule a phone conversation, or via emails back and forth, to have their assessments reviewed informally. Taxpayers will have about four to six weeks to be able to go through this informal process. This is very, very important for a number of reasons. Number one, for the taxpayer, they'll get, they will not get the results sitting at that moment, but they will get them before June. Whereas if they wait until the formal process, which occurs in June, they're not going to get the results until after September. So you go through the informal process, it's done, and you know what's happening to you going forward in a month. If not, you wait three or four months to find that out. After that informal process with Tyler Technologies occurs, that becomes the formal grievance appeals process that everybody's heard of. You have to file a formal, a formal form that comes from New York State, and you fill that out, and you supply additional documentation, and you go through that whole entire form process.
So basically, what is, you first, you know, get it in the mail. If you don't like it, you could call Tyler. If they agree with you after they review the reasons why you disagree, then they'll make the changes on their own, and you don't have to do anything. On the other hand, if you meet with Tyler... On the other hand, if you meet with Tyler and they say, you're wrong, and you feel you're right, then you could file the grievance, and then you have another chance, and it goes before the Board of Assessment Review?
Correct.
So there's two different opportunities, and will that, that will all be spelled out in the Tyler notice?
Correct.
Is it, is the, is the envelope going to say reassessment info in red letters stamped on the front of the envelope?
I'm trying to get it to say that.
Okay.
We're going to try and get it to say something, please don't throw out in big letters.
Exactly, so people know.
Important.
But sometimes important is not enough.
Yes.
Because, you know, credit card bills are important.
Are there certain communities, are there specific communities that will see a significant increase, and if so, why?
We are still working on those statistics on a, per neigh, on a per-neighborhood basis, neighborhood being, we've broken it out into eight sections of town, the six villages, and then the two unincorporated areas that we're working on. So we'll be able to have all of those statistics, which we'd like to be able to come back at a town board meeting. Once that's all been finalized, we're guessing like in the next couple of weeks.
So my feeling is, maybe right before the week that we're sending out the letter, why don't we put this on the agenda, and then we could have another, you know, discussion and maybe do it at a town board meeting, you know, as well? You know, what I'm planning to do is I asked George and Janelle from our cable TV studio to put this presentation on YouTube, and then I'm going to post it on the town, you know, website. So this, because I think a lot, you've given us like a lot of, you know, very valuable information, and then we'll mention to people that if they have any, you know, the questions that could email us, and then we'll, we'll get back to them. But, you know, I think you've done a really good job of reaching out to the community. You've probably had like 50 meetings with different neighborhoods. You know, there's some on Saturdays and a lot on evenings, so, you know, I don't think people could fault you for not trying to reach out.
Tens of it, yes.
You know, and we do appreciate the fact that, you know, you came from, you know, the state and are helping us.
Thank you for doing it, for doing the project. It's important, and not everybody does it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think that there's anything else that we can present to you at this point.
And you're going to prepare like a little easy-to-understand explanation that I could post on the, on the town website along with the video?
I'll do that.
Yeah, because, that's perfect, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I will notify the school districts that you've made the decision to adopt the homestead. I'll do that now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
Paul, make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.